We're gonna come back to order. Come back from recess. Welcome back, everyone. Actually, you wanna go grab those? Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes.
I have a point of order I'd like to make.
Sure.
Thank you. So, I raise this as a point of order. We adopted our rules unanimously at our city council meeting on January 2nd. And in the rules, we have Rule 1D. "The seats of the city council shall be numbered and no member shall change their seat but by permission of the President." And we have Rule 1B. Robert's Rules of Order shall be the authority adopted by this council on all points of parliamentary practice, not specifically covered by the city charter or any statute ordinance or the rules of the city council. And we have our Charter, Section 13. Rules of the city council. The city council shall determine the rules of its own proceedings. So I referenced Robert's Rules of Order. The particular version I used was the Simplified and Applied Third Edition, pages 133 to 134, underheading the President, which reads, "Primarily, the office of President includes fulfilling a leadership role by setting goals or a specific tone for the organization during the term of office, performing duties as assigned by the bylaws and presiding at the meetings. Whatever the structure of the organization, the President has authority to do only the things that are assigned to that office by the bylaws. Often, those elected to the office of President misunderstand their role in the organization and believe that the members have given them free rein to run the organization any way they please, thus setting up a dictatorship. As a matter of respect for our rules, past practice regarding the limited authority given to the President in our rules and validated in Robert's Rules of Order, I challenge the authority of the President to make an involuntary seating change that was not requested by the elected member or members. The President has created a new rule. The President assigns seats following the election, which the President does not have the authority to change without approval of the city council. I seek the President to follow Rule 1D and comply with our city council rules." Thank you.
Madam President?
Thank you, Councilor.
Have we actually started this meeting by the Pledge of Allegiance? Or is that through executive session?
Yep, so we did. But I also want to recognize that we do have a special guest with us this evening, and I wanna recognize your and respect your time and see if we, if there's a motion to take out of order to invite Sharon Konstantinidis in. There was an order filed at the last meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any, okay. Go ahead.
If I may just a friendly suggestion is technically, a point of order is a priority motion. You wouldn't be allowed to have another motion to suspend the rules or do anything until that's recognized. Having said that, the point about maybe we do the swearing in, excuse me, the roll call of attendance and the pledge of allegiance, and then maybe Counselor Bacon is willing to delay her order until the honorary goes through. Maybe she'd be willing to do that, but I think technically, we're not allowed to do that.
Okay.
To move on from a point of order until it's addressed.
Okay.
I am willing to do that.
Okay, great.
So could I make a friendly suggestion? We do the roll call and pledge of allegiance and then invite Sharon?
Yep, so the clerk will call the roll. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bacon?
Here.
Anderson Burgos?
Here.
Hartley?
Here.
Devine?
Here.
Gibner?
Here.
Greeney?
Yes, here.
Jordan?
Here.
McGraw-Smith?
Here.
Murphy-Rombeletti?
Here.
Macasio?
Here.
Israel Rivera?
Here.
Jenny Rivera?
Here.
Sullivan?
Here.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which is a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless America.
And the city council.
And Hoyoke.
And Hoyoke.
Here, here.
So, now, we also just, I do have a couple of points of housekeeping before we even start the meeting. Counselor Anderson Burgos is zooming in, so I entertain a motion to take a roll call vote that for the purposes of this meeting would be applicable to all motions to remove an item from the table, place items on the table, open a public hearing, package items, or suspend the rules unless there is an objection.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That's the first. The second is that Counselor Bacon's name was pulled, so she will be voting first this evening. And then, I'm really excited to pause this evening and invite Sharon Konstantinidis to join us in council chambers. Sharon! Come on up, Sharon. Holloway.
Nice lady.
So, there was a motion filed to recognize Sharon for all of her work and dedication to the city of Hoyoke for over 20 years. She's been an administrative, the administrative head clerk in planning and economic development, but she's also worked in many capacities in the city. The mayor's office, Parks and Rec, yeah, she's been all over. And she has also, we've worked together, so this is very special for me. She was my city hall mom, and everyone needs one. So, you know, she, her contributions to the city are invaluable. She spent many late nights, as I'm sure you've all seen her, on planning board meetings and keeping everything organized as best she could. And, you know, she, she really has gone above and beyond for our community, and she's very active in the community as well. So I'm sure, even though she's retiring, I'm sure she will continue to be active. She's volunteered for Celebrate Hoyoke. She's a very active member of the Greek church, the Holy Trinity. Am I right? Yes. Holy Trinity Orthodox, Greek Orthodox Church on Main Street in Hoyoke. So Sharon, on behalf of the Hoyoke City Council, we would like to present you with a proclamation that you can hang, you know, right wherever you're gonna see it every day. So you think of all of us. Yes. On the fridge, that's perfect. For your 20 years as an administrative head clerk in the OPED department, on behalf of the Hoyoke City Council, from myself and all of us, we really thank you and wish you the best in your retirement.
Thank you. Thank you. I leave bittersweet, but looking very forward to the next phase of life. But many of you don't know me, but in big moments in my life, I do write poems, and I happen to have one.
Oh, nice.
If I may.
Yes.
"As I retire from 20-plus years, I leave excited, but not without tears. The person that started her second career no longer has unemployment to fear. Rearview mirror for lipstick application, a manicure while driving, such aggravation. Getting to work a race against time, 8:30 a.m., an unrealistic deadline. Several things I will no longer need, my lunch bag packed with food indeed. No fingernail polish for a pantyhose run, a drawer full of personal items or gum. Won't miss email requests, angry calls, or developer's deadline. Bimonthly meetings, council orders, or doing minutes, no time. A butter notices, the budget a thing of the past. I no longer will have to do anything fast. Retirement will be a sweet stage in life, doing what I want will certainly be nice. Relationship friends I was blessed to meet, my time with the city is now complete." Awesome.
Thanks, Sharon.
I send you a virtual hug.
Thank you. Congratulations. Enjoy your retirement.
Good luck.
Thank you. Enjoy.
but she is going to do that at a future date, so hopefully next meeting. Okay, awesome. All right, so, back to business. Just wanted to start us off with something cheerful. So, the point of order was made to challenge my decision to have the authority to assign seating. And I recognized the challenge, and I also, you know, I wasn't really gonna make time to say my piece on this, but like, I guess now is the goodest time as ever. I will reiterate what I said before, that, and you know, I actually was watching the last council meeting from December, and Counselor McGivern literally talked about how the President assigns the seating. So, I also encourage folks to go back and watch that video. He talked about it. I actually had to laugh because I forgot that he even mentioned that at the meeting. And so, I mean, I'm, I hear everyone's concerns. This is also something that I don't really, in the rules, it discusses seating, and folks can't change their seats without the President's permission. And I said before, and I'll say it again, if we need to change the rules, so far, I haven't seen anyone file, or actually, maybe Counselor Devine just recently did. I ha, so, you know, that's, I guess, if we're being procedural, point of order is recognized and denied?
Then I make a motion to challenge the ruling of the chair.
Okay.
And cause the council to come into compliance with Rule 1D, so that counselors would be sitting in their assigned seat upon election unless they request to be changed and you approve it.
Is there a second?
Second.
We need to do a roll call vote for that, right?
Under discussion.
Under discussion. Counselor Jordan, and Counselor Israel Rivera actually had his hand up first. Counselor Rivera?
So, just to be clear, I'm not moving.
Neither am I.
No matter what you guys decide, I'm not moving.
I'm not moving neither.
So, so if you guys decide to move, then I don't understand how this is gonna work. Because I don't have to move. There is no law that says that I would have to move.
Okay. Counselor Jordan?
First of all, I'll say a couple points. One is, I think this, a lot of this whole situation could have been avoided with some consultation. I think I've made that point before. We wouldn't be in this position now relative to that. The point on a few things is, let's just start with the rule itself. The rule is that your seat is your seat. You cannot move your seat unless you have permission of the President. That is the rule. Okay? So, that doesn't mean that the President can move you out of your seat. That means if you wanna move, you need permission of the President. Now, when new people come in, they don't have a seat. So the President gets to say where everybody that doesn't, is not an incumbent, has a seat. That is, I mean, that's just always been the tradition. That's exactly how this rule has been interpreted. Number two, I, just to keep myself honest, spoke to the former President, Todd McGee, and he concurs with my opinion, and I can use this. Okay?
Okay.
So I spoke with him. He said, absolutely, your seat is your seat. If you ask to move, the President, and that's what 1D says. You, you need, you cannot just, one meeting, I'm here, next meeting, I'm just gonna go over there and over there. However, any open seats, the President gets to say where you go. If you wanna move, you have to have the President's opinion. Of course, I'm the President that was before Todd, and Joe was the President before me. So right there between all of them, 26 plus 6 plus 6 is quite a long time. And I would say that we follow that. However, I will say on a side note, I have spoken to the President about a possible solution other than that, but, you know, that hasn't been grabbed, that baton has not been grabbed yet. But nevertheless, technically, my seat is over there, and, you know, if people wanna move from here to there, they could have asked me, and then maybe I would have considered moving. But, you know, the other thing I'll say about this rule is, again, it speaks to seniority, it speaks to respect, it speaks to consultation. And I know there's been a lot of discussion about decorum and people being respectful of each other. Doing things like taking people's seats away without consulting them and signing them all here and yonder, it's disrespectful. That's the other reason we don't do it. That's why that has never, ever happened. Okay? It's these basic courtesies is why this rule is in place. So, you know, I personally would have liked to have been consulted. I think, you know, there's a solution for this, and we can talk it through, potentially. But if that's gonna be thrown out and people's honest, sincere, you know, alternative solutions are gonna be rejected, then technically, the rule is, your seat is your seat until you ask to move. And that's what the rule says. And that should be enforced, if someone's gonna call us on it. So, if on the other hand, the President would like to create a different rule, then you should file an order to change the rules that says, the President assigns seating, and that's what the new rule would be. But the President is not entitled to just make up rules and just do whatever they want. No, the President, just like everybody else here, has to follow the rules. And that's our process, and you can't just make up a rule. And that would be making up a rule. So that's why technically, you know, the, the point of order is correct, and that has been our tradition forever. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Gibner, then Devine, and then I do see Anderson Burgos has his hand up as well.
Thank you, Madam President. I think I'm looking at the same rule we're talking about. It doesn't make a whole lot of mention of seniority. Says, "The seats of the city council shall be numbered." I can't believe you didn't number these seats. And, "No member shall change their seat but with, but by permission of the President." Sounds like the President assigning seats is by permission of the President. I don't see any situation, I don't find this to be very important. I think the President can number seats if, if they want to. As far as open seats being assignable, that's not what the rule says either. The solution, I don't see a problem. I don't think we need a solution. It's a new term, there's new seats. Is it, I don't think it's that big of a deal. Seniority, most of us here have two years' seniority right now, so I don't see that being a big issue either. Taking people's seats away, basic courtesies, there's a lot of basic courtesies that should be shown more often in regards to things other than our seating assignment, so I just wanted to point out those few things. I don't think it's that important. I think we're seated, I think we're spending too much time talking about where we get to sit, and, yeah, that's how I feel about it. Thank you.
Counselor Devine?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. It also says, I was gonna go along with Counselor Gibner, "The seats of the city council shall be numbered." I don't see any numbers. And, "No member shall change their seat but by permission of the President." I don't know what a seat has to do with your mindset or what you have to say. It's a seat, it's a chair. But I also, with all due respect to my exceptionally good friend, former Council President McGee, I'm sorry, but I could ask a lot of opinions of people that are formers, and that doesn't mean we have to agree with it. So, I think the chairs have been put into order for a reason, and I think President Murphy-Rombeletti said it best when she changed them, and let's see how it works out. And I did file an order that every two years, the President will make seating arrangements. So, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Anderson Burgos?
Thank you, Madam President. Listen, so, I mentioned this before, when I first found out that my seat was changed, I wasn't happy with it. And I did some, you know, deep thinking, why is that? Because I'm a creature of habit, and I like sitting where I sit. But then I thought to myself, this seat doesn't, the seating doesn't mean I'm gonna be able or not be able to do my job. I go in, I sit down, I do my job. I was elected to go in and do my job. We do not own those chairs, we do not own those desks. The people of Hoyoke own those chairs and desks. I don't see what the big deal is. I, I mean, I, I really looked at our President's plan, and I felt a little uncomfortable at first, but then I said, I get it. We're strategically being put together so that we can learn from one another and break the routine that's been going on in these rooms for as far as I can remember, anyway. And I think this is something good. And for us to be upset about this new arrangement really dials down on the individual that's making a big fuss about it. Really, just think about what you're there to do, and do it. It's as simple as that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Israel Rivera?
I think we're wasting a lot of time over something that is not that important. Tradition is not law. Tradition is not policy. Tradition is just tradition. Tradition is great, it's awesome, but tradition evolves and it changes over time. And it sucks when, when things change. I totally understand that. I think, for me, though, there is, there has to be a clear definition of what seniority means for me, because I keep hearing seniority be thrown around. Is it a consistent term, or is it how long you've been doing it? Because it, there is, there are some people here that have been here consistently a certain amount of time, and there are some people here that have been here for a long time, but it wasn't consistent. So to me, it's like, what is, what is the definition of seniority if that's the case? Is it over a consecutive term with no breaks? Or is it, like, because to me, terminology is just being thrown around, and, again, this, this goes back to a lot of what I've said over the last two years, there's smoke and mirrors. If you're not paying attention, they'll try to lose you in the verbiage. So here, the most important thing for us to do is to do with the agenda that we have and deal with that and move forward. The concerns have been heard. If we're gonna vote on it, I guess vote on it, but I think ultimately is, I'm not gonna move my seat. I don't know what's gonna change, because I'm not gonna move.
Sure. First, Counselor Jordan?
I'll defer if it's, he hasn't spoken yet.
Okay, sure.
I only have one word to say. I'm happy with my seat, but it's a question of respect. That's all, a question of respect, and I will always vote on the side of respect.
Thank you. Counselor Jordan?
Yeah, thank you. So, this is beyond tradition, it's the rule. The rule says, you, your chair, you, in order to be moved, you need permission of the President. That means I'm supposed to ask if the President, I wanna move somewhere else. That's the rule. This isn't, this is, yes, the tradition supports the rule, and we've always done it this way, but in addition to that, that is what the rule said. And the point that is also being made here is, it's this rule, what's the next rule? We just make this stuff up as we go along? No. We have a rule that if you don't like the rules, change the rules. And I've said that at prior meetings, and I'm met with these type of answers like, oh, that's old-fashioned, we're, it's all different now, we do things different ways. Well, no. You have rules, you have laws. If you don't like those, we have a process of changing rules and changing laws. That's the way the, you're a legislator, that's the way it works. Okay? You don't just get to say, oh, I ignore the rules that I don't like, and I'm just gonna do whatever I want and make up my own rules. That's not the way it works. As, as far as all the other stuff goes, yes, I think it is to not be consulted, I found disrespectful to walk in and have someone taking my chair over here. I felt that was highly disrespectful. In fact, I, just for the record, I did ask for my chair back, and I was told no. Okay? So, you know, put in the type of service that I've put in, and maybe you'll command the seniority respect, pay your dues, you know? I had a chair here, thank you, voters of Hoyoke, and that was my chair, right over there. Okay? And we have a rule, I didn't ask for it to be changed, so that's what Rule 1D says. Did I ask or did I not ask the President? In fact, not only did I not ask, I wasn't even addressed. So the fact of the matter is, is what I'm concerned about with this seating issue, and it's not the biggest issue in the world, but it's an important issue, because it goes to the fact of following the rules, and I don't like the idea of setting this precedent that we just make up the rules as we go along. I don't like that. Because that is not the authority of the President, and it's also just not the way to operate. Okay? We need to be, if we're gonna start a collaborative thing here, as I thought the spirit, I know I said that when I spoke on the, on the inauguration day, and I know the current President spoke to that, I thought we had a lot in common on the point about collaboration. This isn't collaboration, my friends. This is not collaboration. This is, we talk to each other, and, and then when people put out all their alternatives to work through situations, those things should be taken seriously and also should be considered and happen, too. So, that, that is my point about that. What Counselor Devine has done is the correct way to do it. Basically, what she just said makes my point. You file a rule change, and if you want this to be the new rule, fine. But until that rule change passes, we follow the rules as they exist today. Thank you.
Counselor Bacon, and then Counselor Rivera, Jenny Rivera?
Thank you, Madam President. So, I just wanna point out that we have five proposed rule changes on our agenda tonight. So, we either, in my view, do things the right way, which filing the orders and making the changes is, and then we all agree that we will follow the rules we unanimously voted to follow, but we need to do things consistently. And so if it is the will of the body to change the rule, I would abide by that rule. I'm not wed to the rule relative to seniority or any sort of metric of that sort. I'm simply looking at it from the perspective that we all voted to follow the rules, and the rule is very clear, that I need to ask to move my seat if I want to change it, and then the President has the ability to say yes or no in response to that request. And that's all I'm asking, that we return to our normal order, follow our rules until such time as we change them, which may be in the offing. And that is all I'm seeking. Thank you.
So Counselor Rivera, and then Counselor Devine?
Madam President, I just wanna say again, thank you. You are the President, it is your decision. Again, I'll say whatever, I don't understand why we're still on this topic. Why? Respect? Is there such a word in this council? Is there such a word in this council? Because really, respect does not work here. work here. Presidents get disrespected, not just President, um, Desmond Murphy Ramboletti. President McGee has gotten disrespect, disrespected while here. Women have gotten disrespected. The city attorney was told to drown a mother with kids. So, respect? Not such a word here in council. Once again, thank you. This is where you want me to sit? This is where I am going to sit and I am not moving. Simple as that. If you put me outside, I'll sit outside. I don't care. But this is what you picked me to sit? This is where I am going to sit. Now, we have an agenda. We should take into consideration that we have Counselor Greeney and his wife here. She should not sit here and then stay here until late at night because councilors upset over a seating? Be for real. Thank you.
Counselor Devine and then Counselor Greeney.
Just real quickly, if I recall, prior to everybody being sworn in, the seating arrangements were Counselor Jordan, Counselor Bacon, Counselor Bartley. Am I correct in that? Because if I am, how come those seats changed before the president changed the seats? Did you guys ask permission to change the seats?
Thank you.
I'll, I'm happy to answer the question if there is a que.
Is there a question that, is it, are you looking for an answer?
That, that was the seating, if I recall. And I don't know if they came to you to ask permission to change those seats. Once a new counselor came in. That's all I'm saying.
Okay. Counselor Greeney.
Yes, Madam President, since I was the one who used the term respect, I've sat in this council for many years prior to this. I've sat on the school committee and I've always exercised that word, respect. And I believe that whatever happens in this council or however it happens, if somebody is disrespectful, that's on them. But respect is following the rules. And that's what it's all about. That's all I'm trying to say. And I respect everybody in this, in this body for getting elected, for representing the people of Hoyoke. And I intend to follow the rules. And I think that that's a noble offering and I think that's what everybody in this body should do. And I believe decorum should be part of it. But on occasion, people get heated in their arguments and they should never be censored. They should be allowed to say what they want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Counselor Ocasio.
So, um, because Patty Devine has said, mentioned about the new counselors. So I said, the reason why I, um, I was sitting here was because, one, I'm new. And two, I feel com- very, very comfortable asking either Linda or Jordan or Bartley a question that I know that they're going to, you know, help me out because I'm new. You know, and not, um, mess me all up. Okay? Because to be honest with you, in the, in this city council, there's, um, counselors here. I don't know for what reason. And I really don't break my head over it because, you know, I'm here because the voters put me here.
That's right.
You know? So I'm here to do a job. Okay? So because I know a lot, few city counselors here dislike me for what reason? I don't know, because I've known them like forever. But me personally, I'm not going to tolerate no bullying towards me, no disrespect towards me, anything. You know, because I'm here, I'm here to do my job. I'm not here for little kids game or any of this. I'm like, I'm very mellow. But I'm also, you know, not going to tolerate anybody to disrespect me in any which way or form. That, that's, and that's a guarantee. But, um, the president had, uh, I mean, when we had came in the morning, we would sit it one way. And then when we came in the evening, you know, we would sit it another way. So, you know, I don't know if things are done intentionally. I don't want, I don't want to like start a little thing, but, you know, if it's stuff was done intentionally to put me here where I am at right now. But to be honest with you, with, you know, and where I'm sitting at right now, I feel very uncomfortable where I'm at. Very uncomfortable, you know, because of what I said, you know? That there's people that dislike me here, I don't know for what reason. But, but I'm here to do my job, whether I'm comfortable or not. Still going to sit here and just, um, do what I got to do because I'm here for the people. But like I said, I'm not going to tolerate nobody disrespecting me in any which way or form. And we all should get along because we got work to do. You know, and it's in this, in this serious work, you know? It's not, nothing light. But we, we all should put our heads together and just do what we got to do and that's it. Keep it moving. It don't got to be friends.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, so, um, on the motion, um, to, uh, challenge the decision of the president, um, we, it was seconded under, we did discussion. Um, so, uh, the clerk will call the roll. And if you are, if you're voting in favor, you're voting to,
overturn the.
overturn the decision.
That's right.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
No.
Bartley?
Yes.
Devine?
No.
Givner?
No.
Greeney?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
No.
Murphy Ramboletti?
No.
Casio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
No.
Jenny Rivera?
No.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Six yeas, seven nays. So with that, the, uh, motion does not pass?
Can I make one? Motion that we continue with the city council meeting?
Can I make one comment after this? Just so we can bring closure to this issue?
I, yeah, sure. I mean, honestly.
All I would ask the president is just consider a seven, six vote just took place. Just take that into consideration.
Thank you.
As you're going to think about this topic.
Thank you.
And is that, is that where we want to go for the next two years?
Great, thank you so much.
Just consider that.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Um, so now, back to the agenda. Um, we're going to kick this off with public comment. I don't. No one signed up in the chambers, but we do have someone online. Oh, we don't want to Zoom bomb her.
Their hand is up, so I can't assume until we let them speak.
Okay. So we have someone on Zoom. Manu Chabra? Just, you'll have, uh, 90 seconds to, um, comment. I'll let you know when it's at a minute. Um, and, uh, you'll need to state your name and, and address for the record, please. So whenever you're ready, if you're there. Maybe. Are you there? Okay. Okay. Oh, wait. Connected to audio? No. Yeah, we'll have to remove. Then we have, uh, someone on here, Bobby Joe? You're, you're still muted? Okay, maybe not. So that didn't work out. Um, but no one else in the room has signed up. Okay?
Moving on.
Moving on, communications. Um, motion to take item one off the table?
So moved.
Moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, from Mayor Garcia, a letter appointing Mr. David Blood, uh, 35 South Street.
Yeah, motion referred to a public service.
Second.
Madam President, excuse me. Could you finish reading that before we send it to a committee? Certainly the people at home want to know, you know, what it exactly says before we flip right into a committee.
Okay.
And that's in the rules.
That is in the rules. I was going to say, I saw that in the rules. So, and I also will just add that, um, I, I have received feedback from our, our wonderful translators that, um, the faster we speak, the harder it is for them to do the live translation. So I'm definitely going to be mindful of that when reading all the orders. But, um, so, uh, from Mayor Joshua Garcia, appointing David Blood, 35 South Street, South Hadley to serve as a member of the Tourism Advisory Committee. He will serve a three-year term to expire January 1st, 2027, um, to public service. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed?
I, I just.
Oh, sorry, yes.
Discussion?
Yes, under discussion. Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, that's okay. We have under discussion too, right, Counselors? That's good. Um, so just a point of order. Uh, we, this is, uh, somebody from South Hadley.
So, yes, Counselor Givner?
Well, I'm, I'm not done. Can I?
Of course, yeah. Yeah, that's all right.
All right, I just want to make sure. And I'll speak very deliberately and slowly.
Absolutely.
So here's a person from South Hadley on, on a, and I'm, we, we love South Hadley, but the, the question becomes, is this permissible to have out-of-town residents serve on, on Hoyoke Municipal Boards? So when we serve, when we, I simply wanted to suggest that we send a copy of this to the Law Department and we should probably have somebody, just a, a communication sent from the Law Department to the Public Service Committee, just to clarify it.
Sure.
That's all.
Sure.
That, that's my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Under discussion? Counselor, well, I saw Counselor Givner's hand first and then Counselor Greeney.
Yeah, I just, I just have a question. I didn't realize that this gentleman was from South Hadley.
Yeah.
When I voted, so.
Yeah.
I don't know if we can rescind our.
Oh, no, that's okay. So what we, what Counselor Bartley just made a motion that we can still send it to committee, but we also copy the Law Department so that they can make sure to weigh in if it's, um, permissible for the Advisory Committee, Tourism Advisory Committee.
I would yea to accept. That's what I'm saying. I'd like to rescind my vote to a negative because this person's not Hoyoke.
Oh, okay. We're not actually voting on the person tonight, just voting to send to committee. Um, Counselor Givner?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to point out that this is a Hoyoke business owner. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. So motion has been made and seconded to, uh, send to public service with a copy to, uh, the Law Department to confirm that, uh, this applicant is eligible to be on the, uh, Advisory Committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Okay. Item number two, from City Clerk Brennan Murphy McGee, um, the minutes for the January 2nd meeting and the council reorganization meeting.
Motion to receive and adopt.
Motion to receive and adopt. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to suspend the rules and take three, four, and five as a package and then refer them to Finance Committee.
Second.
Um, motion has been made and seconded to take items three, four, and five as a package and send them to the Finance Committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed?
You want, you want to read them now?
Oh, yeah, of course. I knew that.
Fine, just, just.
It's great. So, item number three, 2024 year-to-date pilot payments from the city auditor. Um, item number four, uh, city auditor, um, 2024 sewer enterprise fund budget versus the actuals. Item number five, from city auditor, um, 2024 general fund budget versus actuals.
Just off the, off the committee.
Okay, off to committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair, just a quick point of order, very, very brief. Uh, w- when I speak, it's not to interrupt or be rude.
Yeah.
It's just to move the meeting along.
Totally understand.
It still means you can still read the entire order into the record. I'm just getting it going.
Yes.
That's, that's, and we've done that for, it's a tradition, but I mean, I'll, I'll curtail it, but I just try to, if you notice, not a lot of people make motions or not a lot of people make a second. So, and it takes a minute or two to get into the rhythm of it. I just like to move it along.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All respect.
Absolutely.
Excuse me, Madam President?
Yes.
Just, uh, on item three, could we also send a copy to the Treasurer for clarification for the Finance Committee as to, uh, the last item? $50,000 with no idea of who it came from?
So we'll send that to the.
I'll second that.
And that can be discussed in committee, I'm sure.
And also, it's as of 1/11, right? We have payments from August, July, August, nothing from October, November, and December. I find that very hard to believe that HGNE is 120 days arrear in their payment. I think this, it, it, I'd like a copy to the Treasurer for clarification in time for the Finance Meeting.
Great. There's a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Motion to take item six, um, from the Hoyoke Police Department, response to Counselor Israel Rivera's order asking for the report of payouts for the police department from, from the past 20 years.
Well, I'll make a motion to receive.
Second.
Under discussion? Do you want to send it to public?
Well, it's his order, so.
I would say Finance.
Finance?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion, receive and, and refer to Finance for a discussion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
Madam Chair, I'd like to suspend the rules and take seven, eight, and nine as a package and then have a motion to receive them.
Motion has been made.
Second.
Seconded to take items seven, seven, eight, and nine as a package. Sorry, let me grab this. To take seven, eight, and nine as a package, receive them. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
So, just a point of order.
Yes, of course.
So what I would suggest humbly?
Yep.
With the, we, most of them being seconded, then you read them.
Yep.
And then you call the.
Yes.
Vote.
Got it.
Very simple. And again, all these counselors here, they know that. And when you're standing there, you get freaked out.
Yes, you're, uh, you know what? You're right. I'm going to own that.
You're doing well.
Thank you. Uh, so item number seven is the Hoyoke Historic Commission Minutes from October 2nd and November 20th. Item number eight is the Hoyoke Redevelopment Authority Summary of Activities from November 22 to October 23. And number nine is from the Board of Fire Commission Meeting Minutes from December 18th. Uh, so we're all to receive.
Madam President, I, just for number eight, can we just send a copy to DGR on that one, please?
Copy to DGR.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
And the motions to receive.
Motion to receive? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Item number 10. Uh, the petition of ACMJ for a special permit extension for the marijuana manufacturing establish, establishment at 532 Main Street.
Motion to receive and send to ordinance.
Second.
Second, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? President's report, I'm not going to take up much more time because it's already 8 o'clock and, um, I'm sure I could say a lot of other things. I did want to say, since our last meeting, um, uh, we, I presented a proclamation to, um, Mary Lynch as the, um, uh, Grand Marshal for the St. Patrick's Parade Committee on all of your behalf. Um, and it was a wonderful evening. and it was a wonderful evening. And then, most recently, over the last weekend, was the Mass Municipal Conference. There were several Counselors in attendance, actually, Holyoke was, was rolling pretty deep at this weekend conference, and it was just a great opportunity for everyone to have a chance to learn more about municipal law updates. There was information on housing and some climate change information. Overall, just a great opportunity to network, and I appreciate the Counselors that were able to come and join. And I encourage everyone, if you're not signed up for the MMA newsletter, definitely get signed up. It's, they have a lot of free webinars that I think even all of us could benefit from, and I've been taking a lot over the last few weeks, so. So, yeah, that's, my President, the last thing I wanted to just mention, I did email folks about the, or Jeffrey did, really, the committees that we still need people to join. So just as a reminder, I'm gonna be making decisions on those city council appointments this week. It's the Tourism Advisory Committee, it's the School Building Committee, which is still meeting a lot as the new middle school is, is being built. The, the Parking Advisory Committee, Counselor Bartley is on that, but Counselor Maldonado Velez was, was on that, so if anyone wants to join, Counselor Bartley, you know, let me know. And then, the Citizens Advisory Committee, which helps the process with CDBG, Community Development Block Grants. So, those are committees, we can resend them if anyone needs that, but I do need to make a decision this, by the end of this week, so, Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, usually the CAC, that, that might, that's a great board, and I think somebody on DGR should probably, should probably do that, so.
I have an idea, but I might follow up.
Hopefully, well.
Okay. All right, so we'll head into reports of committees.
Excuse me.
Did someone? Oh, sorry, Counselor Sullivan.
Did I miss it, or did we skip over four and five?
We took them as a package. Three.
Sent on the Finance, three, four, and five, okay.
Yeah, those all went to Finance.
Yep, thank you.
Okay. All right, so, reports of committees. The 11A, the Committee on Finance, to whom was referred an order that there be and is hereby appropriated a transfer of $9,768.13 from Office of Planning and Economic Development Contract Services to vacation buyback, sick leave buyback. The Committee recommended that the order be adopted, so.
Make a motion to pass the first reading.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Counselor?
Yeah, this is a, in fact, it was the person that came in tonight for the proclamation, Sharon, the 20-year employee, and this was from, it's a contract services, $9,768.13, and for vacation buyback and sick leave buyback, which is part of the union contract. So, the Finance Committee recommended that it be adopted, or be adopted, and we had Erin Vega in, and a couple of things. People, if you haven't been up to meet with Erin, I would suggest you do because he's got a great office up there and a terrific staff. And so I just think it's a good idea, and this is part of her collective bargaining agreement, so that's why we adopted it.
Any other comments?
Okay.
So, is there a motion to pass the second?
I did the, well, don't we have to do a?
The second reading.
Right, but don't, you don't have to vote on the first one? Okay.
We did.
Okay, motion, motion to pass second reading?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, we're gonna do a roll call vote, of course, I knew that, I was just testing you all, making sure. The clerk will call the roll.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Gibner?
Yes.
Grady?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Acasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Unanimous vote. With that vote, you've passed that transfer, thank you. Motion to take item 11B, the Committee on Finance, to whom referred an order that the city council accept the provisions of the Community Planning Grant Program, $90,000, no match, grant, and authorizes the establishment of a fund or other method appropriate, recommended that the order be adopted.
Motion to pass first reading?
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Counselor Devine?
Okay, this was, we also had Erin Vega in for this, Community Planning Grant Program of $90,000 with no match, and the intention of using it is for, to start working on the master plan. I think the master plan is 24 years old, and the last time we did this, I believe it was at the school, not Kirtland School, but Medcap School on North Hampton Street. They, we did it 24 years ago, so that's why the, the grant has been accepted, and we adopted it at the Finance Meeting.
Anyone else? Okay, so, is there a motion?
Motion to be, pass the second reading.
All those in, the clerk will call the roll. Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Gibner?
Yes.
Grady?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Acasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Unanimous vote. With that, you've passed that transfer. Thank you. Okay. 11C. Committee on Finance, transfer of $20,000, $20,780 from Library Assistant Knight to the Reference Library Assistants. Recommend that the order be adopted.
Make a motion, pass the first reading?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
This, we had Maria in from the library, and it's pretty basic, it's budget neutral. This was a part-time librarian who's now going to be the Reference Librarian Assistant, and now going full-time, so it's budget neutral, it's the same person, so it was adopted.
Great.
Motion to pass the second reading?
All those in favor? Oh, no, God, I'll get used to this, I swear. The clerk will call the roll, if you vote yes, you're voting to approve the transfer.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Gibner?
Yes.
Grady?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Acasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera? Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Unanimous vote. With that, you've passed that transfer. Item 11D, the Committee on Finance appropriated by transfer $30,000 from the Assistant Engineer, or the Engineer Assistant DPW Superintendent, $15,000, and Senior Civil Engineer, $15,000, and transferred to Professional Engineering Services, $30,000. Recommend that the order be adopted.
Motion to pass the first reading?
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Okay, this is just a continuation of the contract services for the interim engineer that we have right now, and we did talk to the Director of the DPW about, you know, finally hiring a new engineer, and he's really hoping to do that, and they're, they're trying very hard to hire somebody, so hopefully it won't be too much longer.
Thank you, Counselor Grady.
That was my question, it was just answered.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay?
Okay, motion to pass the second reading?
Second.
The clerk will call the roll. Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Gibner?
Yes.
Grady?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Acasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
With that, you've approved that transfer. Item 11E.
Motion to go out of order and take up E, F, and, E and F as a package?
Is there a second? Motion to take item E and F as a package?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Great. So, Counselor Devine? Do you want me to read it first?
Yeah.
Please.
Yeah. The first order, 11E, the Committee on Finance, to whom was referred an order, the Law Department provide city council with an updated legal opinion regarding the City Supervisors Association, and within it, at a minimum, include whether the association is a union, if it is a union, when is this designation approved, and by what authority, under what general law is it affiliated, and please specify the department heads who serve at the mayor's pleasure. Further, please provide the specific department heads included within the association. Please provide any past legal opinions and relevant exhibits. And it looks like the Committee recommended that the order has been complied with. Counselor Devine?
Yes, there were a few older orders in the jacket, so this was one of them, and this was from, an opinion was given October 5th, 2021, about this, and, and I certainly remember, I'm sure Counselor Jordane and others remember, this comes up a lot as far as the professional association, so that opinion was given, and I would say that the order was complied with, and perhaps we should get the opinion that was given, if we could get a copy of that.
It's in the jacket.
I'm sure it's the Law Department that did that.
Yeah, Jeffrey, Jeffrey says we have it, and he'll circulate it.
Okay, great.
And then the item 11F.
Right. That, oh, go ahead.
I haven't read it yet, sorry. The Committee on Finance, to whom was referred an order that the police and fire chiefs appear before the Finance Committee to document how much of the police overtime total of 2,066, no, 200,666, 682 expended through the end of October was to cover for vacation, sick time, injured-on-duty status, and grant-related detail. The same information is requested for the fire department in the expenditure of 157,305 through October. In both cases, how many persons per shift being absent leads to use of overtime. The goal of this order is to determine if we are at our most cost-effective staffing levels without jeopardizing public safety, so both of these are on the, on the floor right now, and.
Motion that they be complied with.
Does anyone have, is there a second? Under discussion?
And I'll just say, this again was an order from Counselor Terry Murphy, October, I mean, December 15th, 2020, and from what I read in the jacket, it's been discussed many times, overtime has been discussed many times, so that's why we had it complied with, and certainly Counselors, if they want to file other orders about overtime, they certainly can do that, but it was just an, really an old order that was in there, so we wanted it complied with.
Okay. All right, so, the motion has been made and seconded, that these orders are complied with. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Roll call.
For complied with?
I think because of the Zoom.
Oh.
No?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, don't we suspend that?
Oh, yeah, that's why we took the motion at the beginning.
Right, in the beginning.
I thought we had to vote.
Okay. Well, item 11G.
Motion to remove from committee?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The item G, the Committee on Finance, to whom was referred an order that as the city considers purchasing any replacement vehicles, it reach out to the state to see if the city could be more, could be eligible for significant rebates off the purchase price of electric vehicles. The MORE EV program offers rebates to private as well as public entities for purchasing electric vehicles, now including trucks. In addition, that the city look into the Massachusetts Green Communities Grant Program, which provides funding to assist with the installation of EV charging infrastructure. Counselor Devine?
Yeah, make a motion that this been complied with?
Second.
Under discussion, are all those in favor?
Aye.
And under discussion, everyone should have a letter on their desk from January 17th to 2024, from Jamie Morrow, Chief Procurement Officer, explaining about the green vehicles, which ones we can have because one is animal control vehicle that was recently purchased. They've investigated by buying all-electric Ford F-150 light, lighting, however, I guess where the battery is in the vehicles, that's where the animal cages would be, so I certainly appreciate her writing a letter about this because that was another order from the past for Counselor Murphy, Terry Murphy. And I just also want to thank the Finance Committee for helping out so much, and I thought everybody did a great job, and I appreciate their help.
Great. Anyone else?
Yep.
Oh, sorry, I didn't see you there, sorry. Counselor Sullivan?
And just a further update for the council, at the MMA meeting last week, one of the seminars was on accessing federal funds, and this is one of the things that there's gonna be much more money available for, not only in the form of grants, but also charging stations, not, not just the feasibility of them, but outright free installation and up to 100% reimbursement on them. So there's a lot going on here on the federal side, and the state has opened, the governor has opened an office to assist municipalities and departments within, within the city to go through this process and comply with the regulations. So it's, it's great stuff moving forward.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, oh, I'm sorry, did you have your hand up?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Seeing none, motion is that the order has been complied with. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? So moved. Moving on to motions, orders, and resolutions, and as Counselor McGee used to say, if it's going to committee, you don't have to debate it.
We can.
You can, yeah. Alright, so...
I want to make a motion, because...
We don't like tradition.
Okay, alright, let's keep moving forward. Counselor Bartley?
Wants us to be friendly in talking.
Just to suspend the rules, because it looks like they're all going to the same committee, so 12, 13, 14, 15, and 16 be put as a package, and shipped over to Charter and Rules.
Yep.
And then I just want to make a friendly amendment for one of them, if I can, so...
Sure. So, motion has been made and seconded to send items 12, 13, take up items 12, 13, 14, 15, 16 as a package. I'm gonna read them each. Item number 12, filed by Counselors Devine, Jenny Rivera, and Counselor Gibner, that Rule 3 Meetings, 3A, be changed to reflect that city council meetings shall be held on the 1st and 3rd Tuesday of the month at 6:30 PM, changing from 7:00 PM. Item, or order 13, also filed by Devine Rivera and Gibner, Rule 4, under City Clerk Section A, in case of the absence of the city clerk, a clerk pro tempore shall be appointed, the words clerk pro tempore shall be deleted and changed to Assistant City Clerk, Second Assistant City Clerk, or Administrative Assistant to the City Council, shall resume the duties of the city clerk when the city clerk is absent. Number 14, filed by Devine Rivera and Gibner, that Rule 8, under Decorum and Speaking Section C, during debate, if objection is made thereto, no member shall speak more than twice to the same question without leave of the city council, no more than once until all other members choosing to speak have spoken, would change by deleting the words "without leave of the city council." Number 15, filed by Devine Rivera and Gibner, Rule 6, Decorum, Section E, add the words or city employees after the words "another member." Number 16, filed by Devine Rivera and Gibner, Rule 7, Agenda Section 2, delete the words after the Pledge of Allegiance. So, motion...
Can you tell us what the words being deleted in that order are?
I did not file the order, so I will... I mean, I can...
Won't we find out in committee?
Yep, we will find out in committee, and we will have the opportunity to discuss this much further in committee.
Yep.
Well, I will find the rule then.
It is in the rules.
It's whatever it is, it's seven, Rule 7, Agenda...
Section...
Section 2. So, the motion has been made to send these to Charter and Rules. All those in favor?
Under discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry, yep, it's not malicious. Counselor Bartley, and then Counselor Sullivan?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a friendly amendment to item 12, where it says 1st and 3rd Tuesday of the month at 6:30 PM. I just want to have some more flexibility in that, and just say, to an earlier time. Because I don't know why we have to have 6:30 as opposed to 6:00 or 2:00 PM. Just make it to an earlier time, and we'll have a debate on it. That's my motion.
Okay, motion has been made. Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
And...
No, we're just gonna talk about it, that's all.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay. Oh, so you're not actually making a formal motion to...
Oh no, I just want to change the wording of the order, so it allows the committee more flexibility.
Okay.
So, instead of just saying 6:30, I just said to an earlier time.
Okay.
So...
Okay. So, the motion's been made to change...
I'll second that.
Counselor Rivera and Bacon seconded that, under...
That's it.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
That's just my friendly amendment.
Oh, that's it? Okay, that's an amendment. Counselor Sullivan?
While we're still under discussion?
Yes.
I'd like to read the words that are being deleted for the...
Thank you.
So they know.
Go for it, thank you.
What's proposed to be deleted is God bless America, God bless the city of Holyoke and all its citizens, and God bless the city council.
Thank you. Alright, yes.
Am I recognized?
Counselor.
Thank you. So, the way that the order is written, alright, I guess we're all set, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Bacon, Counselor Jordan.
Relative to item 16, I have to say, you know, we'll discuss it in committee, but I want the citizens to understand what this request here is. We have on our agenda, long, long tradition. Again, another tradition, call me old-fashioned, but I call, I come from a certain cloth in Holyoke perhaps, and I'm gonna stay on that cloth, by the way, because that's the way I was raised, and I was raised right, with the right values. And one of them is this, that I speak a lot about financial issues relative to the city, and I will also say that I don't often get an opportunity to speak about theology, or certainly religious. And, but I will say, and I'll, they'll be, stay tuned, there'll be more to say about this order down the road, but I will say, we have a long history on this council to thank God, to, and whether it's in our oath of office, where we say, "So help us, God." Every meeting, we put our hands over our heart and face that flag, and we say we're one nation, under God. Every dollar this city ever spends, it says, "In God we trust on it." And this council has had a long, illustrious history of asking that we, "God bless America." God, I hope that, I hope, God, you will bless America. God bless Holyoke and all its citizens. God bless the city council. God, I would pray that those things would all be true. I would pray that all of those things would happen. But I will say this, this long and illustrious tradition of the city of Holyoke, this, and its honorable city council, was put quite a number of years ago as an agenda item, so that when that statement was made, as optional as it is, and it is completely optional, just like the Pledge of Allegiance, for that matter, is optional. You don't have to say the Pledge of Allegiance. You don't have to say, "God bless America." But that's where it's located on the agenda. And that's what this item says. So, for us to now be debating, "God bless America," I just want citizens to know, and every other one of these rule changes specifically spelled out the wording that was changed, and did you notice in 16, God bless, the words to be deleted were not even put in the order. "God bless America," delete. "God bless Holyoke and all its citizens," delete. "God bless the city council," delete. Be an interesting debate.
Thank you.
Excuse me, I don't recall relinquishing the floor. And so...
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. So, as long as I'm sitting here, I will tell the citizens that voted for me, I certainly stand for these principles, I will speak to these principles, and I hope our city will continue to support these type of principles, this optional statement that we love this country, and hope certainly for its divine protection. Thank you.
Okay, please, I'm Counselor Graney, you're first, and then Counselor Bacon, I see you. I also want to remind people that we are going to have these discussions in city council subcommittees. And I understand that it might be a little frustrating to have to listen to me manage a meeting, but that is exactly what I am going to do. And I understand, if folks don't feel like I was raised right, I was. So, I want to remind everyone that we don't have to have an extra hour of this meeting in order to discuss things that we are going to discuss in subcommittee. That is why subcommittees exist. Counselor Graney?
Can I just have a question?
Sure.
Chair, do some of these orders constitute censorship?
That will be a great question for the Law Department, when we discuss it in committee.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Bacon?
Thank you, Madam President. I would just like to say, because it was pointed out that, by one speaker on this council, that I was being petty to bring up the rules relative to seating, and I would just note that I think an order like this really is just unnecessary, and creates division where it is totally not needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Devine?
You know, this is what the people are getting sick and tired of, and all I want to say was, I don't know who you're referring to that was, used the word petty, but it certainly wasn't me.
Alright, counselors, we're good, and we're gonna keep moving forward. And so, those will be sent to Charter and Rules, and I'm looking forward to a lively discussion.
Oh yeah.
Item number 17, this is what we get often, so I'm gonna read this. Ordered...
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I think we, did we take a vote?
I thought we all...
I don't think we did.
Okay, so...
All in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? So moved, thank you.
Suspend necessary rules and pass the first reading?
So, I'm gonna read it first. Ordered that there, item number 17, filed by Counselor Devine, that there be and is hereby appropriated a transfer, $35,446.34 from sergeants and patrolmen to injured on duty. And just a heads up, that represents 14 officers. I know that is often a question, folks are curious about. Counselor Devine?
Suspend the rules and pass the first reading. This is a, an accounting formality that is done when you have injured on duty, so they can continue to be paid.
Under discussion?
Yep.
Counselor Sullivan?
Yep, and I would just like to point out that one piece of information we're not given, and not necessarily names, or anybody jeopardizing anybody's safety, is how long some of these have existed, injured on duty?
Yes.
Never, ever are we given that information.
Okay. Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, just through the chair to Mike, I would say, probably a discussion with you, the city council president, and the chief could probably amend on a regular basis, I think is a great idea. And I think also, Counselor Sullivan was, pointed out last time he was cycling on the board, that it's just an important note, and we do know it once in a while, that when that you don't receive an IOD payment, that is what? Tax-free. So, I'm not saying that's an incentive, I'm just pointing it out. So, that kind of may or may not go hand in glove with what Mike just said, but it's something just to consider. And the last point is, I think it's just an important order, important tradition that we have, to, and it's something we're all gonna support. Obviously, we want to pay, pay the men and women on the force when they're injured on duty, but it's just a way for us to get a better understanding of how many are injured on duty from the police and fire. So, the hope is that the city council president will have, will have that at her fingertips for, I mean, for pretty much all the, you know, 20-some-odd meetings we're gonna have throughout the year, you know, just to, just to kind of apprise us. Thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. So...
On the motion.
On the motion?
Roll call.
Motion to pass the second reading?
Second.
She's gonna make the motion.
Make a motion, pass second reading?
Second.
All those in, the clerk will call the roll. This would be to approve the transfer 34, $35,446.34 to injured on duty. Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Gibner?
Yes.
Graney?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy Ramboledi?
Yes.
Acasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Unanimous vote. With that, you've passed that transfer. So, now we're gonna go... There a motion to take?
18.
18?
I'm gonna make a motion to refer it to Finance with a copy to the mayor.
Do you wanna take anything as a package, maybe?
I can't hear you.
I don't know if I'm allowed to suggest that, but can we take, do you guys want to take items 18, 19?
Well, it's usually Finance Chair would do that, so...
Okay.
Well, if I may then, Counselor, I will take, if you could suspend the rules and take up items 18, 19, 20, let's see, 21, 22, okay.
Okay.
And send it to Finance.
So, the motion has been made to take items 18, 19, 20, 21, 22 as a package. I'll read them. Order that the city council appropriate transfer, $20,000 from capital stabilization to contracted services, ambulance feasibility. Item number 19, ordered that the appropriated by transfer, $300,000 from sergeants, patrolmen, dispatchers, to overtime. Item number 20, ordered that the city council hereby accept the provisions of the Mass Emergency Management Agency Hazard Mitigation Plan, $26,800, 10% in-kind volunteer match, and authorize the establishment of a fund associated with the grant. 21 is, the city council accept the provisions of the 2023 Community Mitigation Fund Transportation Planning Grant, $82,300, no match. 20, item number 22, ordered that in accordance, the city council accepts the provisions of the fiscal year 23 TDI Equity, $38,550, no match grant. And so, the motion has been made to send Counselor Bartley...
No, you can make your motion, I'm just gonna... Under discussion, after you make the...
I was gonna say, that we would send it to Finance, and I am planning on having a meeting on the 31st, so we can put these on, if our administrative assistant will do that, and get in touch with the appropriate people.
Some of these are on tomorrow's meeting, I mean Wednesday's agenda.
That's right, because he moved them from today, okay.
So...
They'll be on tomorrow.
So, motion has been made and seconded, under discussion, Counselor Bartley, and then Counselor Jordan.
The meeting tomorrow is ordinance, right?
That's what I meant, I meant Wednesday, sorry.
Right, okay.
Feels like it's already Thursday tomorrow.
No, no, just, uh... Three, three related items. One is, what is our free cash status? Does anybody know? So, I'm gonna ask you, the Chair of the Committee, to figure out free cash. Have we, we have free cash certified? So, we know that capital stabilization, and I've often credited Counselor Lisi, and I will again now, for at least bringing this as a possibility, and I credit the mayor for actually funding it. So, it took more than a minute to do this, and it's proved very beneficial. Number two, relative, and that was relative to item 18, so I want to understand where we are with free cash, because I've seen nothing relative to that. Second off, relative to order 19, you know, it's, I think it's important that at some point, we get some kind of summation, and I should have done this years ago, I don't know why I didn't, but a year-to-date, and I'm hopeful that the chief or his agent who comes in, how many transfers have we made from the police department to overtime, and what total year-to-date? We just go through this stuff, and we stamp it, and we just need to understand what it is a little bit better, and more consistently, so that we're just not, you know, going through the run-of-the-mill. The last one is, and this is kind of more of a positive thing, I have noticed, Madam President, but I can't prove it, we seem to be getting a lot more grants, and that's a very, to me, a very encouraging sign. And I just see a lot of grants coming in at a lot of meetings the last year. What I want to make it clear, and it's never clear in the grants, however, is that we do have an ordinance that I filed, Counselor Leahy co-filled it with me, and we passed it into law to say that at the conclusion of a grant, that the awarding department will send a report, doesn't have to be more than a page or two, of the outcomes and the uses of funds. Now, why do we do that? Because we had a white elephant in this body, in this city, because of mismanagement of grants, well over millions of dollars, and from very serious, I mean, for very large departments, i.e. the police department and others, there were just mismanaged grants that caused a tremendous hole in the budget. So, it's important, I think somehow, if we can get that written into the order, so that it's always in front of us, that the grantee, meaning, I know the grantee's a city, but in this case, the grantee would be the awarding department, that the grantee would, it would say right in there, that pursuant to city ordinance, whatever it is, now I forgot what it was, that the grantee will provide, at the conclusion of the grant, within a certain period of time, a report to the city council. I just think that's something that, if we kind of let it go, and then once we pass these things, you know, I don't remember, you know, I don't keep a log of them, myself, and it would be nice if, and I'm not asking Jeff to do it either, though, maybe I'm not, maybe I am asking, though I'm not asking, but nevertheless, it would be, it would be somewhat helpful if we could track these.
Sounds like something Jeffrey could...
Yeah, so, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Jordan?
Yeah, thank you. Just a friendly suggestion over to the Chair of Finance, in advance of the meeting, relative to item 22, there was an allusion to lease document between the recipient of the grant and the city of Holyoke. If we could get provided copies of the lease documents, and then I think whoever is the, if it's purchasing, or some department that's monitoring the lease for this individual, I'd like to have that person come to the meeting, because I have questions about the lease documents, the purchasing rules, relative to the proposed recipient of the, of this grant.
Item 22?
Yes, yep. Item 22, please, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Great. So, the motions have been made and seconded to send those to Finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? So moved. Moving on, item 23, filed by Counselor Devine, that the DPW make the no parking sign outside of 88 Jarvis Avenue larger.
You received and sent to the DPW?
Motion is... Motion is to receive and send a DPW.
Just a very friendly, friendly amendment. When we say larger, can we kind of quantify that? Just so, because I've, I've seen orders like this come in and they, the, the DPW is going to say, well, okay.
Councilor Devine, yeah.
Maybe, maybe we could just specify.
The director will be in tomorrow and, uh, if you were to go by that, it's right next to Donovan's, the sign is extremely small and this woman that owns that house has a terrible problem when there's over parking at the, um, Donovan's or any other, um, hub that might be up there at any given time. And so I was planning on talking to him and maybe taking a ride with him to show him how small this no parking sign is and then he, he could tell us how big it'll be. So I didn't go out and measure it, I just know that it's very small, it's very hard to see, it's certainly hard to see at night, so, um, I'm just trying to help out the woman at eighty-eight Jarvis.
Okay, sounds like you've talked to DPW.
Yes, please.
Councilordane.
This is a good order, it, could I be added as a co-sponsor?
Oh, sure.
Because, um, I've actually had this, from this constituency before too as well.
Great.
Thank you.
Um, so, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? So moved. Item twenty-four, that a new signed blind driveway ahead be placed at thirty-five miles an hour sign heading towards eighty-eight Jarvis.
You received and sent to the director of the DPW?
Sir, motion is to receive and send to the director of DPW.
Receive, adopt.
Receive, adopt.
Yes.
And send to DPW.
And I'll speak to him tomorrow about that as well.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? So moved, great. Item twenty-five, uh, ordered Councilor Devine to add the position of city engineer to the ordinance under Schedule A, Grade Thirteen, send to ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? So moved. Um, item twenty-six, ordered that the city council resurrect the peace and good order ordinance copies, uh, to the mayor, city clerk, law department and police chief.
You received and sent to the ordinance committee.
Okay, uh, is there a second?
If I might, um, I'm not sure if, uh, Councilordane remembers this.
Yep.
This was a great, um, order and for some reason, it's gone. I can't find it in the orders, in the codes, nowhere, so I'd like to, um, see if we can resurrect it again. It was an order that myself and, uh, the late Chief Canoyer put together and certainly the city council was, um, terrific in this as well. And it enabled police officers, the Board of Health, to ticket people that were, uh, not abiding by the laws and it was really terrific in one, raising money and two, quality of life for the people was just so helpful with these tickets. And the only one I could think of that was on this committee at the time was Councilordane, so he remembers and, um, I'd like to see if we can find it and try to get it going again. Thank you.
Councilordane.
Yeah, I think, um, Patty, what happened here was in different iterations and rewrites of the ordinances, when you had it as like all one sort of piece, they took a piece here and put it in this ordinance and they took a piece here and put it over here. So I think it kind of like, the elements are there, but it's not one together piece and now it's through, sort of scattered throughout Muni, Muni code, um, over the years.
But it's not a ticket any longer.
Right.
That's what, we've got to get back. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, mhm.
All right, so the motion was made and seconded to, uh.
Send no.
Send off to the mayor, city clerk, law department, police chief, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Uh, twenty-seven filed by Councilordane, that the mayor please provide the city council with his plan to bring our structural deficit, budget deficit to zero in fiscal twenty-five budget, including a plan that does not raise the tax levy by more than one million per year.
I'd ask that receive, adopt, refer to the mayor with a copy to finance.
Second.
Motion to receive, adopt to the copy to mayor and send to finance, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? So moved, um, twenty-eight filed by Jordane and Ocasio, uh, that the Board of Health and Police Department come to Public Safety Committee to discuss various issues in the community related to homelessness and how we can work towards better solutions.
Receive, refer to public safety.
Motion is to receive and refer to public safety, seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, item twenty-nine, uh, Jordane and Ocasio, that O P E D, uh, come to the Development Government Relations Committee to discuss how to help people start new small businesses in the city.
Yeah, to D G N R Committee, please.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Item thirty, DPW, uh, also filed by Councilors Jordane and Ocasio, DPW also install a flashing signal stop sign for cars to stop at the crosswalk of Cabot and South Summer Street, so residents can safely cross Cabot Street.
I would ask that this be receive, adopt and refer to the DPW with a copy to ordinance in the event they, they say we need something, but since it's only a flashing light, I don't think it requires an ordinance, it's not technically a traffic control, but if they do say that we need something, then we'll have to do something additional in the ordinances, but we'll, we'll wait to hear from them. But we need something, the people are trying to cross that busy street there and they need something to really catch their attention.
Thank you.
Madam President, do, do we need a city engineer on that because of stop sign?
Yeah, um, potentially, right, yeah.
Okay.
Councilor Bartley.
We have the crosswalk itself, but.
Well, I, it's a great order, I guess the only thing is it's a significant financial transfer to install these, so I, I don't see how we have the authority to just receive and adopt it. I, I think, I think you need to send it to the mayor and then send it to finance to figure out a transfer, figure out a ways to, to pay for this. Uh, I, my, my understanding, in fact, we have an approval for, that I filed for the far end of High Street where merged with Lyman, that's, that's yet to be installed, so we did that a long time ago, um, and so I'm waiting for a, now the good news is that we have a fairly significant influx of cash, which when we get to my order somewhere here, we'll, we'll have a discussion about all these things, but I, I don't think we can just receive and adopt it and think that's the end of the story, because it needs a, it needs a financial transfer unless there's some monies within DPW, but as we, as I found out the hard way from the DPW superintendent, well, who's going to pay for this stuff that I, that I passed? So I, I think you might want to just slow this down a hair and get a financial picture, but my two cents.
Councilordane.
I'd like to see it adopted, but the point is well made, that if there's a request that there's money, uh, that is needed and they can't shuffle the playing cards around with the cash, uh, to make it happen or, uh, from different sources that they have, then I'll be happy to communicate with Carl and see if we need to bring a, a financial request in. Nevertheless, um, I think it's appropriate to adopt it in that we want to get it done and we'll find the money somewhere to have it done. It's extremely dangerous and it's heavily used, there's a crosswalk there that was approved and put in, uh, we're trying to make sure people can actually safely, it's one of the busiest streets in the city, uh, Cabot Street there, uh, by Key Foods, so I want to make sure the residents are safe as they're crossing to go to the supermarket.
Thank you. Councilor Rivera and then Councilor Ocasio.
Thank you, um, I filed several orders, uh, on this particular corner over the last two years, um, it would be great to have the blinking stop line, uh, there, uh, um, I, I would say we could push it forward and adopt it, because the same thing happened for, I think, I believe it was Race Street and Appleton Street and Race Street and Dwight Street. Dwight Street came first, but the Race Street and Appleton one, we've just passed it and then whenever they got the money to do it, they put it up. It took like a year and a half, I'm not going to lie, that the, the, the lights came up, but it finally came up. I think they could do the same, but I would also say that with the city engineers, having a larger conversation to see what other measures we could do, like bump outs or whatever, because people park right there in those corners and it blocks the vision of people that are trying to come out, uh, by, um, not Amadeus, Capri, so you can't really see, so like, some of the stuff that's mitigated those issues on Main Street and Appleton are the bump outs that no longer allow someone to park there. So maybe if that's the case later on in the future, when we do get that infrastructure funding, that could be something larger in the long term, but I'm with adopting it now and then hopefully the money comes and they just do it whenever they do it.
Any other, just, oh, I'm sorry, Councilor Ocasio, I had you on my list too, sorry.
Well, um, when, when I, I, I brought it to, um, the ex-city council, uh, well, uh, they had put us, they put a si, uh, they put a big sign there that says, uh, crosswalk, but it's too high up and then they put it right in the center of the sidewalk, like right in the corner with the, uh, people with wheelchairs, they got to squeeze through in order to get through, people with scooters can't get through. I mean, they did what, you know, something that I had asked for them to do, kind of, but the way they went about it was very sloppy and now they have to redo it all over again. They, whether they did it right the first time, something simple, you know, you got to look up in order to see the, the, it's a sign up and you can rarely see it. And the other day I had to cross a gentleman from Capri with his daughter across the street because people wouldn't stop for him and his daughter, because they couldn't see it. And then the lines, they just put them up and they fading away already and it only been three, not even three months. So it's, it's dangerous there, I mean, there's a lot of traffic, you know, going up and coming down and they just don't give nobody a break, you, you have to throw yourself in the middle of the road so they can stop.
Thank you. Anyone else? It sounds like there may be a purpose to discuss this in, in committee, but, um, the motion was to, uh, receive, adopt with a copy to the mayor, is that right?
We had asked that, I'm fine with, uh, receive, adopt and then we can have a copy to public safety too, if we need to do a follow-up.
Okay.
And the engineer.
And the engineer.
And the engineer.
If the engineer doesn't okay the stop sign, it's not going to happen.
So motion to receive, adopt, send a copy to public safety and the city engineer?
Yep.
Second, is there?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? So moved. Yes. Councilor Sullivan.
We still don't have a city engineer.
That's correct.
We have a.
We have the contract, I guess we'll use the contract as service.
All right. Item thirty-one, um, filed by Councilors Jordane and Ocasio, that DPW please repaint the crosswalk lines at the corner of Cabot and South Summer Street, they were just done and already fading, um.
Receive and adopt, obviously a little too cold right now, but when they can get to it in the spring, when the painting season starts, I know they bought a new painting machine, so that was great news, but, uh, we'd ask that this be adopted, so they're on the list for the spring.
Second.
Okay, under discussion, I see Councilor Givner, then Rivera, then Greeney.
Thank you, Madam President, I just wanted to, um, just share that I've had a lot of luck with repainting lines by simply, um, emailing the DPW and emailing, uh, the DPW director and they put it on a list, especially not for new crosswalks, but if there's a crosswalk where you can't see anything, um, it's not necessary to always file an order. I mean, if you're not getting a response, that's something, but, um, I've had a lot of luck with just emailing and saying, hey, you know, this crosswalk is fading, please add it to your list of crosswalks to paint and they've been getting on it when the weather's, um, when they can, so I just want to put that out there.
Thank you. Councilor Rivera?
Yes, I just wanted to clarify which one, is it both of them? Because it's, there's the one coming from South Summer and then there's the one on Cabot, so, so i- if we're talking about the one going from Racing Mar, not Racing Mar, from Sea Town or Key Foods to Capri, that's the one, right? That we're talking about, right? Where you're crossing from Capri to Key Foods?
I mean, they just put it there, right? There was one, um, sideways like this and then the one from, from the corner of Capri to cross into, um.
To Key Foods, yeah.
Yeah.
So I, I would, I don't know if, I think I'd take some, one of, uh, Councilor Bartley's friendly amendments, um, and just kind of clarify that, so that way when the engineer comes in, you just say, can we do the section that's actually going from Capri to Ca, to Key Foods, because that is important, I've crossed that street all the time and it is a headache to cross that street.
That's a good point, yep. Make, uh, make an amendment to clarify that we're referring to the one going across Cabot Street.
Thank you.
So the, uh, motion has been amended to include, um, the, the, to clarify which crosswalk, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? So moved. Oh my gosh, I'm sorry, Howie, I'm, I'm going to get there, uh, Councilor Greeney.
You got to get moved from the corner, Howie, up to this side, it really helps.
What I really need is to be back here.
A point of information for anybody on the council that's older than I am, they used to have, uh, a, a paint, a special type of paint that glows in the dark, I mean, I don't know if they still use that paint, but I think it would be, certainly, uh, would be conducive to the residents to have something that shines in the dark so that they, resident, that the, uh, motorists can see that as well.
Thank you. Okay, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Um, uh, thirty-two filed by, uh, Councilors Jordane and Ocasio, that the DPW clear the path on the sidewalk free from extra signs at the corner of Cabot and South Summer Street, so residents can properly access the crosswalk with wheelchairs, scooters or baby carriages.
Receive, adopt, refer to DPW and the city engineer.
Second. Can I add handicap advisory committee? Because if you're going to, you know, put those, those, I don't know what they're called, but they have little dimples, so to speak, if you want to get a wheelchair across or a.
We don't really need those, but what is, there's too many signs so that you can't get a wheelchair through, so they're trying to see, can you move some of the signs around so that people can actually, if you're handicapped, actually access the crosswalk? Yeah, you can't, you can't get the, those type of items.
So, uh, motion has been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? So moved. Um, item thirty-three filed by Councilor McGrassmith, order that the city clerk provide information outlining the procedures for submitting changes to Muni code and ensuring accurate publication of the city charter. Would you like that?
Can we receive and send a charter and rules?
Sure. Motion has been made to receive and send to charter and rules. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Uh, thirty-four filed by, uh, Councilor McGrassmith, order that the city forester and DPW director provide information outlining the criteria for tree cutting on private property and procedures for communication to property owners. Would you like that?
Receive and send to ordinance?
Receive. Count.
Yeah, I, I probably, if I may, just, I, I, I might, you might just want to receive and adopt and ask them to send the communication, this is what, sounds like, that's what you want to do. Am I missing it?
Yeah.
Yeah, so why don't just, why don't we just receive and adopt and ask them to send a communication within thirty days?
Okay, so the motion has been made to receive and adopt, um, and ask for a communication from DPW within the next thirty days, under discussion, Council Greeney?
Yeah, just quickly, shouldn't the law department have a say on that too?
The law department?
Because it's private residences, uh.
Okay, okay. Is that good with you, Councilor? Okay, so, um, a copy to the law department as well. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? So moved. Councilor thirty-five filed by myself, um, that the city council vote to approve, um, the attached memorandum of understanding allowing the city of Hoyoke to receive transportation reimbursement in accordance with the provisions of the Every Student Succeeds Act, um, as allowed by the provisions of Master General Law, Chapter forty-four, um, Section seventy, um, to finance. All those in.
Aye.
Great, all those in favor?
Aye.
Item number thirty-six, ordered, uh, that the city establish a health insurance trust agreement, uh, pursuant to Master General Law, Chapter twenty-three B, Section three A, um, Master General Law, twenty, uh, Chapter thirty-two B, Section three A permits a municipality to establish a health insurance trust to organize, arrange and provide for the delivery or payment of healthcare coverage and services. The establishment of a trust by the city to administer healthcare payments will create a significant savings to the fiscal year twenty-five proposed budget, um, to finance.
Yep, a copy to the mayor.
Copy to the mayor, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? So moved. And, uh, filed by myself, item thirty-seven, ordered that three salary reports for the calendar year twenty-twenty-three be provided to city council as an update to the past reports published on the city website, the top one hundred salaries for the city of Hoyoke, the top one hundred salaries for the Hoyoke Public Schools and a, a report of salaries for elected officials. Reports should not include confidential in identifying information such as social security numbers, um.
Receive and adopt.
Receive and adopt. Receive and adopt. To personnel. Treasure.
Oh, treasure, sorry.
Yeah.
So...
Yes, Counselor Greeney?
I think perhaps that the top one hundred salaries could be, could be in Hoyoke Public School system. I don't know for sure, but certainly the top ten salaries maybe.
We will certainly find out. Counselor Jordan?
Yeah, I had made the motion to have it adopted, and, okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? So moved. Thirty-eight filed by Counselor Rivera, ordered that, or Counselor Israel Rivera, that the city council be provided with a report of retirement payouts for the police department for the past twenty years. Counselor?
Uh, Finance.
Send to Finance?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Thirty-nine filed by Counselors Bacon and Jordan, that DPW Veolia clean the storm drains on Mountain Road.
Receive and adopt and send to Veolia.
Motion has been made to receive, adopt, and send to Veolia. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? So moved. Forty by Counselors Bacon and Jordan, that Mountain Road be re, be evaluated for the installation of, uh, berms, and berms be installed where needed.
Receive and adopt and send to DPW and the engineer, realizing this will not be evaluated until they've hired an engineer.
Okay, so motion has been made to refer, receive and adopt and refer to the city engineer, whoever that may be. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Forty-one filed by Counselors Bacon and Bartley, that permanent radar, permanent radar feedback signs be placed on Homestead Avenue northbound and southbound from Westfield Road to Lower Westfield Road, and from Cherry Street to Westfield Road for a total of four.
To receive and adopt, and I think this would definitely require a transfer of funds or at least consideration of funds, so I think we would have to copy it to the mayor for an appropriation, perhaps, or a transfer as well. And I would note that there is one permanent one on southbound Homestead on the school signs, so we actually would need three, so it could be amended to three.
Okay.
Thank you.
So the motion has been made to receive and adopt and send to the mayor in the case of appropriation. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, item forty-two filed by Counselor Bartley, that the city council invite the parade committee winners for the purposes of bestowing a city council proclamation, and invite the president, its members, and their guests, as well as invite the Hoyoke Caledonian Pipe Band to its March fifth regular meeting. Parade is scheduled for March seventeenth, and this will be the only regular city council meeting prior to the parade. This is a tradition started in city council that is now in its tenth year. Motion to receive and adopt?
So moved. I just want to make a friendly amendment to my own order, to add the AOH, I forgot them, but we had them last year, and they were a nice addition. So there's an AOH man and AOH woman of the year, and the AOH president, so they, they should be, they should be added to this as well and invited. And I'll, I'll, I'll work with Jeff, as I did last year, and the Pipe Band to get them to be here. Okay?
Counselor Devine?
Yes, I've already sent a email to the parade committee members and indicated that this is something that Counselor Bartley has been doing for the last ten years, and I think the only ones you probably need to work on are the Caledonians and the AOH. But the parade committee is all set, and I'll have those proclamations.
Thank you. Counselor Jordan?
So when we're saying parade, which, which parade? Saint, Saint Patrick?
Saint Patrick.
Yeah, Kev, it's, it's obviously Saint Patrick, that's, that's the one.
Saint Patrick.
Yes, okay.
But, but anyway, that's, yeah, so that's, that's what I...
So we'll just make sure the AOH...
That was implied, but yeah.
AOH gets the invite.
I'll, I'll handle all that.
Okay. Jeffrey said that the Caledonians confirmed their attendance today.
And, so, Counselor...
I did ask them, that's beautiful.
Yeah, so there you go.
Counselor Sullivan also talked about the L.AOH, the ladies AOH, that they should be invited as well.
Great.
Yes, yeah, that, yeah, that's very true. AOH, L.AOH, yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
Uh, let's see, forty-three, uh, boy, do I have, uh, no, I'll just do them in order.
Okay.
Can't beat them.
Okay.
You can just do it in bridge reading, I, I know where this is going to go, so...
All right, so item forty-three, DPW and city engineer provide an update on traffic signal improvements, the main gate to HCC and Hitchcock-Martin Street.
Yeah, this is motion receive and adopt, just very briefly under discussion.
Yeah. Counselor Bartley?
It's got to be seconded, though.
Oh, sorry, is there a second?
Have him.
To receive and adopt, okay. Under discussion.
This has been going on, we're now in our eighth year on this. It's, it's unbelievable. So I, I'm also going to do what I can to see if I get HCC to possibly, I've tried many times over the years to get them possibly to participate in this. They are brutal, but they only have eighteen million dollars in their, in their trust account, and this directly impacts them in a positive way, but really, really tough to, to get them to, to step up. But I will ask the new president to see what, because I haven't met the gentleman yet, I will try my best, and if we could just get some kind of a financial, the plan's all set. So the former engineer laid out the plans, the HFD Alarm Division has the equipment, we just have to get the money to build the plan as designed by the engineer. We're good to go. I mean, this is just, it's unbelievable how many, I know other councils have received emails on this, I know they have, because I'm getting emails from the same fifteen people I've been getting for years. They say they've, they've been emailing, so this, this is just something we have to take a deep breath, but I, I would just hope we could hear something from our consultants and/or the, and/or the, actually, just add, you know, the mayor on this too, some, just something by the end of next month.
Sure, so, so receive and adopt, send a copy to the mayor and ask for a communication[1668.63]